Well, thank you to our very own Tooneal Towns for the singing of our national anthem, and to the marketing department for the images of our city. I'm now going to take this opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as their original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island, and acknowledge that these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that opportunity. Now, I'd like to move to item number four on our agenda, the adoption of the previous council minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held December 2nd as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five of today's agenda, the adoption of the agenda, recognizing councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council, I'd move the council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 7.1 Recreation Cost Sharing Agreement, item 7.7 Declaration of Insufficiency of Petition, and item 7.8 Public Member Appointments.
Perfect. Thank you for that councillor Bressi. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Now, we're moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting, and if you were watching at home and weren't aware, it is greatly appreciated when delegations come and speak to council. There are a couple of options. On a day where we have an evening session, there is an evening opportunity, but there is always a 3:00 PM opportunity. Today, we aren't having an evening session, so we, 3:00 is the only opportunity. We had two delegations that let us know ahead of time they're coming. The form's really simple. You go in line, let us know you're coming, what you'd like to speak about, and then you come and you get on the agenda. Item 6.1 today is the Masqua Medical Centre. We have two representatives with us joining us today. Thank you for being here. Your microphones are on, and if you could introduce yourself for those who are watching from home, and I'll turn it over to you, then I will open it up to council for questions, and then we deal delegation business at the end of our meeting, which won't be a long one today. So you're more than welcome to stick around, or you, you will receive follow-up from administration if you happen to leave. Welcome, and please introduce yourselves.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm Ken Drysdale. I'm chairman of the board for the Masqua Medical Centre.
I'm Rhonda Side, and I'm the vice chair.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And we're here today, Mayor, just to, as being a not-for-profit and charitable organization, was wondering if the city and council would consider forgiveness of the fees for our facility that we're looking at building in 2025, starting in late spring?
Okay, so that item is in order. Council, opportunity for questions for the delegation. Questions for administration will be later on. There is a policy process 607, which involves a application that Chief Glavine can support on in regards to that application. The Operations Services Committee approves that application once it's filled out appropriately. But now, an opportunity for questions for the delegation. First, recognizing councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you for coming to council, and we're looking forward to the Masqua Centre being built here, hopefully very, very soon. Were you given any permit costs? Do you know what you're looking at for cost right now?
We're just investigating that right now, but from my best knowledge right now, it's in the neighborhood of $275,000 to $300,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. I see no one else in the queue. What percentage of the building would actually pay taxes? I think that there's probably a commercial part, there's a nonprofit part, and so, do you have an estimate on regards to the percentage of square foot that would be potentially nonprofit versus commercial?
I believe about a third of the building, so roughly out of the $78,000 rental space on the three floors, it'd be roughly in that $20,000, $25,000, somewhere in there.
Okay, perfect. Councillor Blackmore.
My question is not related to this immediate subject. Do you want me to wait, or go ahead?
Sure. Just, there's no one else in the queue, so, Mr. Drysdale, if you want to just introduce your second item as on your form, and then I'll turn it over to councillor Blackmore, who I think has a question on your second item.
I'm unsure of the second item there, ma'am.
So your second item in the application, or in the form was to, a request for approved loan funding to be released to apply as a deposit on the long-term delivery items for construction materials to ensure that you can maintain the construction costs.
Yeah, as mentioned, we've received pricing from three proponents to build the building, but some of the items, by the time we vet through those three, it'll be February or so before we assign a contractor to the project. And we're looking at crowding the long-term delivery items, such as the main glue-lamb beam structure. And so we'd like the, to ask the request if we could use some of the loan funds early on to secure those materials and, and get them started in the queue for delivery.
Okay. So a reminder for those who might be watching from home, ourselves, the county grandparent and the MD of Greenview, each participated in a, an agreement with Masqua for a loan equalling just over $10 million. That, that loan right now has been agreed upon with all partners, and this is a request to release the, the loan funds in order to be able to use some of that for the securing of construction materials. I will open it up to questions from council, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I am curious if, what type of material you're worried about being behind, behind the eight ball on ordering, and if you would need to use that full amount to backstop or to put down your deposit for those items, or exactly what dollar figures are we looking at?
Yeah, this time councillor Blackmore, where the, the main beam structures are roughly about 2.6 million, and all the suppliers have asked for about a 20% down deposit in order to put them in the queue and start building the materials. So roughly about $500,000 would be needed. And that, that's the only real long-term delivery item that we're very concerned about, so.
And what is your order date for that that you really don't want to miss?
I'd like to have it in place by the middle of January.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton, and thanks, Ken. So essentially, what you're asking for today, if I'm reading this right, would be $500,000 as opposed to the full amount?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I see no one else in the queue, so thank you for being here. As I mentioned, we deal delegation business towards the end of our meeting, and you're welcome to stick around, or someone will follow up with you a few.
I have a, I have a different question, too.
Okay, go for it.
This is a question that I've been asked a lot in the community, and the question is, explain to me how the third floor would work if I came to, to my family doctor and had an undiagnosed back pain, for example, that he couldn't find an answer for. What would happen then?
You're speaking specifically of the third floor as the Masqua Medical Centre?
That's correct.
The operational Masqua?
Yes.
What would happen is, your doctor would refer you up to Masqua, where we will have an internal medicine generalist who will do a more broad intake and determine the best specialist for your issue, whether that's, you know, if it's, if it's a back issue, is it really a back issue? Is it your neck? Is it nerve? Is it, is it some other thing? Typically, when you go, when you go to see your general, you know, your, your family doc, and they, they're experiencing, looking at something they may never have seen before or don't have a lot of experience with, they send you to a different series of tests. Maybe it's an X-ray, maybe it's ultrasound, maybe it's blood work, that's where everything starts. From there, they say, oh, this looks like this, and they send you to, they'll send you to a specialist in Edmonton, but it takes you about six months to get in to see them. That specialist says, nope, wrong guy. Back you go. So then you make an appointment with your, your family doc again, make another appointment, you get in to see them, and they go, okay, so our next step will be this other specialist. And then you're another three months to see that specialist in Edmonton. Each time you're, you're stepping out of your life, you're going somewhere else, you're, you're getting to see that specialist, right one or wrong one. Cumulatively, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of money, and, and you may not get a result. By skipping the process, that, that particular process, our aim is to get you to this general internal medicine specialist who will assess it differently than your family doctor will, who will take more time, has, has more leeway to help determine what the situation is. Instead of seeing that internal medicine guy the first time on a gurney in the emergency room, you're going to see him at Masqua, and he'll get you to the right one the first time, or spend more time getting you to the right specialist.
Yeah, and if I can just add to that, there may be another specialist in that category on the third floor, so that they'll get together, and that's where you get the collaborative team-based approach, just like we do in any boardroom in a business. And we'll also have virtual technology that'll bring in other specialists when needed to help the third floor come up with a diagnosis.
And just to confirm, this is not private healthcare? It is funded through public healthcare in Canada like all other healthcare?
That's, that's correct.
Absolutely. The, the purpose of Masqua is, is to level that playing field. The difference between good health and bad health or life and death shouldn't be how deep your pockets are. That's, that's the purpose of this whole exercise, is to level the playing, playing field in public health.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. With that, I have no further questions. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Item number 6.2 on our delegation agenda today, Mr. Waldemar Schaefer. If you would like to come forward, introduce yourself, take five minutes to address council. Council may have questions for you, and following that, as I mentioned, delegation business is dealt with at the end of the meeting. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Waldemar Schaefer. English is my third language, so I don't know if I.
No worries.
Okay. We purchased a shop here on 108th Street, 2019, and my wife was paying taxes on time and everything, but now she's in depression since August 2022. Last payment she did, I think it was $19,000 on St. 27, and there's more to it. I had a P.O. box in Cherry Lake. Canada Post Office decided to change them to civil addresses, so I didn't receive any mails. And they sent to my shop mails, but it was wrong address, civil address. My shop address is 9502 108th Street, and 9602, and they sent it to 9502 108th Street. And I'm here to, when I saw a couple of weeks ago, I was thinking to pay my tax, I found a letter, it says $67,000, but it's not everything, it's $106,000. And I'm, I don't know. I'm, I need some kind of break, if you guys.
Okay. So, Mr. Schaefer, today, as in your report, I mentioned that you're hoping your property taxes will be reduced or removed, and that in your understanding, the wrong address was on it, and you didn't receive it. So, right now, I'll open it up to council, they may have some questions for you, and then, as I mentioned to the previous group, council will take an opportunity to ask administration questions following your presentation. So, if you, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I want to add another thing. So, and now, it's just a storage shop, yeah, for vehicles and stuff, but it's going to be storage for a hockey bus, and it's going to be storage, gym for junior A-team, so.
Okay. Okay. So, opportunity, council, for questions, recognizing councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for coming today. I'm a bit confused. You said $67,000, and it's actually $106,000. Is that a tax cost or a tax and penalty cost?
Penalty, correct. Interest in more than $50,000, interest.
So the, the penalty is, is added on to your regular 67?
So right now, it's $106, 817.99.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, second question. Get this letter.
I went to this building a couple of weeks ago with this letter. I found it in a shop. They finally sent it to right address, and I found it in a shop, and I straight away talked to them, and they corrected from $67,000 to $160,000.
And how did they know to ship it to a different address?
I don't know. They've been trying, I guess, and then they found out, or some, I don't know. That's the first letter I received, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, sir. This is for Ms. Whiteway and Milo.
We'll do that later.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
So this is the first that you've heard of this, but you haven't received anything because there is a wrong address. Do you have proof of the wrong address on the writing there?
I have one here, yeah. Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay. I would like to, not at my discretion, it's up to the city's discretion, if you could provide that to the taxation department, and they'll work with you, so we'll ask questions later. Thanks. Thanks.
Councillor Cool. Councillor O'Toole.
Can you tell me the date on the first one that you got?
That I got? Okay. This one is April 1st, 2024.
Okay, so, okay, and when the, when, when your wife was looking after this, that's the issue, right? Your wife become ill, and so when was the last one that you were caught up on payments and didn't have any issues?
I think it was 2021, if I'm not mistaken. She paid 19,000 instead 27, I think, or something like that. And after that, she's like sick, yeah, so.
And the bill that you just received, just the most recent, what date was that?
I had it, it was sent April 1st. I received it in my shop. I found it in the shop, I was cleaning my shop two weeks ago.
Okay.
And I went to talk.
There's no date on that one?
No, it says April, when it was sent.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, councillor Blackmore. Okay, so, that's all for the questions from council. So, please, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting. We deal delegation business at the end of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Moving on to reports, first in our list of a few reports today, item 7.1, the Recreation and Cost Sharing Agreement. I will turn this over to Mr Tarrant for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Over the past year, the city council and county council have been working diligently through their intermunicipal collaboration committees to develop a fair and equitable cost or recreation and culture cost-sharing agreement. This agreement looks at all the recreation and culture services that each municipality provides, and we looked at the usage of those facilities by each other's residents, and were able to use a variety of data sources to determine what a fair usage of each other's facilities would be. With that, there was many negotiations and many months of negotiations that occurred, and we've reached an agreement on what we believe to be a fair and equitable sharing of the costs of all regional facilities that are found within the city and the county. With that agreement, tentative agreement, there would be a net cost sharing from the county to the city, starting in 2025, of 2.76 million dollars, which would escalate, you know, as costs increase over the four-year agreement. In addition to the funds that were going to be provided for capital and operating costs of those facilities, there was an agreement reached on past capital contributions for funds that the city expended and the county expended in the recreational facilities over the, in the past. And through that, a net amount of 4.6 million from the county to the city was determined to be a fair and equitable amount to be paid, and so the county will be providing to the city 4.6 million dollars over four installments over the next four years, which works out to be 1.15 million per year. With that, today, we are looking to have council ratify this agreement and endorse it, and which will kick things off. I will note that county council today had the agreement go to their county council, and they have already approved it. And with that concludes my report.
Great, thanks for that. An opportunity for questions, and then I'll look for business arising, recognizing councillor Palat.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, I was just jumping again, I was just going to go for business.
Okay, hold that thought. Councillor O'Connor?
I was going to do the same song.
Okay, okay. So, before you recognize councillor Blackmore.
I think that there's some kudos in order to the people who worked really hard on this committee, which would be Mayor Clayton, councillor Bressi, councillor Palat. It's not easy to come to conclusion that another municipality and you share resources and therefore should share revenue. And I'm just really pleased to see the results of this long and drawn-out negotiation that I think took place with good hearts and good intention on both sides. And so, congratulations to those hardworking people at this table.
Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm excited to vote in favor of this motion. I also, big thanks to their administrative team that put in a lot of work to this, both for the city and the county, and county councils as well, who really did approach these tables in good faith. And I know in my other roles, I've talked to a lot of councils across the province that are really worried about renewals coming up. And I know what was different here was, we spent the last few years collecting data and meeting regularly with county councils to collect good data about what's going on in recreation culture across the region, and whose residents are using what. I think that was really key success, so I'm glad to have this over the finish line, and I'm really thankful for the last ICF negotiating team that set that framework in place, that we'd have the information we need to do this well. So, I'm excited to vote in favor of this.
Okay, councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, just to speak a little bit before I make the motion, I just, I do want to thank Mayor Clayton and councillor Bressi, it was fun working with you on this. And I also want to thank the colleagues over the county that were the reps that they had sent, and their administrative teams. We got to sit there and watch our administrative teams work very, very close together, so as much as council was building a relationship and working with the other, with our colleagues, so was our administration. And I don't think the community realizes just how often we work really, really well together. So, I really want to thank our administration, as well as the county's administration to get this done. And to councillor Bressi's point, it was great that we're using data-driven information, so it kept the conversations at a lot higher level, and not at an emotional level, it was very data-driven, so I really do appreciate that. And with that, I'll make a motion that council approve the recreation and cost-sharing agreement with the county of Grand Prairie as presented.
That motion is in order. Just quickly, I'll say, extend a lot of thank you to Mr Tarrant and Mr Burke and our senior leadership team. There was a significant amount of data collection, sharing of information, administrative conversations, myself and councillor Bressi, councillor Palat, there were significant meetings in this with our county colleagues. This is an agreement that comes to as a result of data. It's a data-driven number that we both agreed on, and it really is something that sets us the standard going forward for this region. Throughout the last year and a half, you've seen significant number of announcements in regards to our collaborative intent, and then this is another one of those. This Recreation and Culture Cost Sharing Agreement is something that we can know leaving today that we have a partner in recreation and culture. So, I thank the county for this, I thank for their administration, for their time, and I look forward to being a good partner with the county of Grand Prairie for many years ahead. Councillor Bressi, did you, I was, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, I also just think it's worth mentioning, councillor Laners did a lot of work on this, too.
For sure.
Conversation going, so I also, we're talking about people, also wanted to mention our colleague.
Absolutely. Councillor Palat, would you wish to close? Okay, I'll call the question. Moving on to item 7.2, the appointment of a returning officer. If you aren't aware, we have an election coming up in October of 2025. With that, we need to appoint a returning officer. I don't know if there's any more that needs to be said to that, and seeing none, I would look to business arising, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council appoint Rory Tarrant as a returning officer for the 2025 municipal election.
Perfect, thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to council appointments, item 7.3, it's our regional competitiveness, the Invest Northwest Committee. It was only started a few months ago, and at that time, we appointed myself and councillor O'Connor to the Regional Competitiveness Committee, which is the Invest Northwest Committee. We'd like to extend that as is, and I'll look to business arising, recognize councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that council appoint yourself and councillor O'Connor to the Regional Competitiveness Investment Northwest Committee.
Great, that motion is in order. Call the question. Thank you for that, and that carries unanimously. Moving to 7.4, the transfer of land to the Canadian Mental Health Association, I will turn this one over to Ms Wentz. I'll give her a moment to get caught up, but I'll turn it over to Chief Lemieux for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, at an earlier meeting, council directed administration to negotiate property sale for two city properties, and so Tammy Wentz, our Housing and Community Development Director, and Janice Murray, our Land Officer, have worked on this with our city solicitors, so I'll ask them to present their report.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Administration is here to discuss the proposed sale of city-owned properties located at 7202 99A Street and 7204 99A Street to the Canadian Mental Health Association, or CMHA. CMHA has leased these properties since 2009, operating what is known as City House. This facility provides safe, affordable housing to families and individuals who fall below the core needs income threshold. In May of 2022, council directed administration to evaluate CMHA's request to transfer the property. Later in August of 2024, the Public and Protective Services Committee authorized administration to negotiate a proposed property transfer agreement. Today, administration's here to recommend final approval of this transfer. The recommendation is to sell the property to CMHA for $1, subject to the terms and condition in the offer to purchase agreement. This transfer of title will enable CMHA to leverage the property as an asset for their planned expansion of Willow Place. This project will add 55 affordable housing units with integrated mental health support. The property has a combined assessment value of 391,100. The success of Willow Place expansion relies on CMHA securing additional funding, estimated between 12 million and 14.5 million. This transfer will strengthen CMHA's equity, improving their ability to access financing. In closing, administration recommends that council approve the sale of the property located at 7202 99A Street, 7204 99A Street, to the Canadian Mental Health Association for the purchase price of $1, subject to condition of the offer to purchase, including the termination of the existing lease upon completion of the sale. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right, so that, thank you for that introduction. I will open it up to council for questions, recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I do have one question, but eventually I'd also like to do business. So, Ms Wentz, all this $1 sale, this is not the first time that the city has done something like this for an organization such as Canadian Mental Health, correct?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you, through the mayor. Yes, that is correct. Do you want to expand on that, Janice?
Yeah, we, through the mayor, we have done this in the past. It's been one of the projects that we've worked on with another few community groups.
And that's wonderful, thank you.
Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just to get my mind wrapped around this again, what was the timeframe for Willow House or Willow Place to be built? What are we looking at? I can't remember.
Thank you for the questions, through the mayor. So, I have had a meeting with Mr Arsenal, and as stated in the last meeting, they are hoping that it's either a two- or three-year project, depending on if it's a stick build versus a modular build. There has been some progress on the seed funding that they had secured, so soil samples, environmental studies, and land surveys are already underway, and they've already hired their architect contractor.
Excellent, thank you.
Councillor Blackmore?
But do we know when the finished product will be, like, a target date for the finished product?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you for the questions, through the mayor. So, shovels and the ground are scheduled for summer of 2025. Depending on if it's a stick build versus a modular, it'd be the two or three. So, the stick build will take longer than the modular build, so that would be, that would put it in the three-year range, two-to-three-year range.
Thank you, I look forward to a motion on this. This is the first building opening I ever attended was Willow Place in 2001.
Councillor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council approve the sale of the property located at 7202 99A Street and 7204 99A Street, also known as the property, to the Canadian Mental Health Association, CMHA, for the purchase price of $1, subject to conditions of the offer to purchase the agreement, including the termination of the existing lease upon completion of the sale. And just speaking to this, we do recognize that there is a mental health crisis in the city. This sale will allow the organization to leverage the value of the land and the building for a loan to expand. And again, this is not the first time the city has done this, so no precedent is set, but it allows the Canadian Mental Health Association to continue the good work that they do and expand upon it.
All right, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, we'll call the question.
Bressi, a favor?
That carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies. Moving on to the second item, 7.6, the Food Security Backbone Coordination, I'm going to turn this one over to Mr Chief Lemieux for introduction. Oh, I jumped one, I apologize. 7.5, the Grant Application for the Government of Alberta Local Growth and Sustainability Grant. And this one, I'll turn over to Mr Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, this is a new grant that came out through the province of Alberta earlier this year, this fall. The grant is specifically targeted to mid-sized communities within the province, so you have to have a population of between 10,000 and, I believe, 200,000. And the grant is to address growth and population impact needs within the community. The city took a deep dive, looking at all the eligible projects that would fit within the grant, and determined that a project that would fit the grant criteria is the Integrated Dispatch Centre that the city is currently building out. And with that, we have submitted an application. As part of that application process, there is a requirement that we have a council endorsement that needed to come before the end of the year, and so we're bringing it for council's endorsement. The ask is just for just over $2 million that would go towards the project, would certainly help alleviate the requests from other funding sources.
All right, thanks for the introduction, Mr Tarrant, recognizing councillor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just happy to support this, just more of a question for administration, if successful, as we had allocated money and capital funding already, what would happen with the extra capital funding?
Ms White Way?
Thank you for the question. So, anytime we have surplus capital funding, it's redistributed and proposed within budget for council. So, if we estimate a project a little bit higher, it comes in lower, that does become available for future use.
Okay, so we'll just move into slide into 2025, 2026 kind of capital projects?
Correct, it would continue on, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, councillor O'Connor?
If you're ready for business?
Go for it.
Okay, I'd like to move council support administration's application to the Local Growth and Sustainability Grant to support the development of the Integrated Emergency Communications Centre.
All right, so that motion is in order. Seeing no discussion or debate, call the question. Now, moving on to item 7.6, the Food Security Backbone Coordination, this one I will turn over to Chief Lemieux for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Tammy Wentz is here with us today, she's prepared the report, so I'm going to ask her to introduce the report.
Thank you so much, Ms Wentz.
Thank you through the mayor. This report follows up on the November 12, 2024 Public and Protective Services Committee report, where we discussed the food security coordination. Administration recommends council approve 80,000 per year for two years, which a total of 160, to Helping Hands, a division of North Reach Society. This funding would support a two-year pilot project with a progress report to council in 12 months. The pilot project will enable collaboration and provide solutions that improve health, stability, and community connection. Administration again recommends approving the funding and using council's strategic initiative. Thank you, ready to take any questions.
So thanks for that introduction. So this is a two-year project to fund Helping Hands, which is a division of North Reach Society. The intent will be that it will come back to council within 12 months for an update on the pilot project. We will need business arising, but first I'll recognize councillors for questions for administration, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The only thing that I'd like to see is that asking administration to make sure that the guideline and scope is developed and work with the organization. I understand that's the goal.
Ms. Wenzel.
Thank you for the question, yes, through the mayor. When we work with the organization, we will definitely develop a scope of work with key performance outcomes that is anticipated from the project.
And a second?
Go ahead.
And also to determine that all of the community groups that are potential to come to council ask for funding, to make sure that all the groups work through this group. I don't want to be force-feeding the horse here, but I just want to make sure that we're going to make sure that we have a good handle on who's taking part, and that we have the whole community and all the food-serving groups involved.
Thank you for the questions through the mayor. Yes, I, we will work with the organization to do our best to ensure that organizations come to this committee prior to coming to council.
All right, councillor Blackmore.
I am just very eager to move ahead with this. Can I make the motion?
Go for it.
Thank you. I move that council approve funding for $80,000 per year for two years, a total of 160,000, to Helping Hands, a division of North Reach Society, as a two-year pilot project to coordinate food security efforts, to be funded from council strategic initiative fund. And number two, to direct administration to report back in 12 months with an update on the pilot project. And in speaking to this, I think that food security in Grand Prairie has reached a point where there needs to be significant collaboration, and this is a first step to ensuring that that collaboration begins to happen. I am confident that Helping Hands can do this job, and I look forward to hearing again in 12 months what an exceptional job they have done.
All right, thanks for that. That motion is in order, seeing no one else in the queue. I'll call the question. Moving along to item 7.7, declaration of insufficiency of petition, I'll turn this over to Mr. Burke for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. This is one of my legal responsibilities to review petitions as they are submitted to the city. Council will recall that we have had previous delegations and communication from residents and business owners looking at paving gravel areas, 99th Street from 128th Ave to 132nd Ave, and some other areas of the city. Council will also recall that you, that money was provided in the budget for us to advance some engineering studies in 2025. So there is some work going on to look at some of the costing and requirements for this area. But in saying that, we have received a petition, and I do have some legal texts here I just have to read into the record, and then will ask council to receive for information. I, Shane Burke, city manager of the city of Grand Prairie in the province of Alberta, do solemnly declare that pursuant to the provisions of section 226 and 392 of the Municipal Government Act, chapter M26 RSA 2000, the council of the city of Grand Prairie has received an insufficient petition for paving gravel areas, 99th Street from 128th Ave to 132nd Ave. The petition is declared to be insufficient on the basis that insufficient number of property owners signed the petition as compared with the number required to sign the petition in order to make the petition sufficient, as for the requirements of the Municipal Government Act. So with that, there is work going on, but this petition is not something that I can bring forward with sufficient signatures and requests, except for information.
All right, thank you for that. Opportunity for questions, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Yes, I assume, CEO, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm just assuming that you're going to reach out to the group and discuss with them where they were deficient in their petition?
Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We have given them information that they wouldn't be sufficient, but we were willing to follow up with them again if they would like further action. We'll also remind, or explain the work that we are planning to do next year with engineering. So we will do a second follow-up.
Thank you. Ready to do business if there's no other questions?
I got a couple more. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Not necessarily a question, but just putting this out there, the way I see it, the group was probably just trying to get council's attention, that they want this project to move forward, but as we discussed, in 2025, we have set money aside in the budget to start engineering work on these streets. So they've got our attention, and we are working towards getting these eventually paved.
All right, councillor O'Connor.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council receive the declaration of insufficiency of petition for information.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously, recognizing councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do want to make a motion concerning this, and I'll make the motion and then I'll speak to it, but it's, the motion is direct administration to report back to the appropriate standing committee with options for an alternative process for residents wishing to express broad support per request of council. And just to speak to this, this group went through a process that's laid out by the Municipal Government Act, so it's a provincial process that if they had succeeded, then council would be legally obligated to take action. And because there's a legal obligation to succeed, it's a lot of administrative work that needs going to it, and we need to declare that insufficient if they don't hit the legal requirements. I don't think that's actually what a lot of residents want when they're going through petition processes. They're not trying to create something legal, they're just trying to do a political process showing council, look, I've got all these friends, they want this, you should do this. And I don't know if that'll be the case with this group, but I know with past groups, it's actually been quite insulting to have them do their hard work and come back and say, hey, your petition is insufficient, and that's what we have to do when they're doing this type. But I would love to see us have another process in place that we could direct residents to if they chose, that's saying, hey, it's not an MGA petition, but here's the process, or here's the form you can use that will not create any legal obligation for council, but will show the political support that you're trying to show. So I hope council will support this. I'd also point out, the returning officer, Tarrant, got his outstanding items list empty at the last committee meeting, and we get to have something on it going into the new year.
Okay, so the motion is in order. I'll recognize councillor Blackmore.
I'm curious if the CAO or councillor Bressi himself knows if other communities have similar bylaws or similar processes that we could cut, paste, and copy, copy, paste, and cut, whatever this is.
Mr. Burke.
I'm not aware of anything, that could be something that we looked into, but I would say we have one of the most open delegation processes in any municipality, which is a forum for residents to come and express their interest in council, considering an item which is a very low threshold.
Councillor Berg.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll support this to the measure that I do want to find out what alternatives may be out there, but I also am just cautious that there may be some unintended consequences, and so, and maybe that is delivered through our delegation portion. So I'm interested to see what, if this passes, what administration brings back, but again, I am cautious moving forward.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. For me as well, I will support this motion. I'm just curious if our open delegations portion that we have now is sufficient, and we just teach people how perhaps our best methods for what they want done in the future, coming to our open delegations may be enough, but for now, just gathering information is fine with me.
Just going to jump in the queue. I appreciate your intent here. I think our delegation process is very thorough. I think that we're very open to having people come. I don't want to send administration out there digging for options just because you're looking for other options that may actually not really come forward, other than the delegation process is the best option. So I'm not really sure if you have other ideas in mind, councillor Bressi, that would maybe make sense, but for me, right now, our delegation process is very thorough, very open. We've spent time on the process, and it's a great way for people to come to speak to council. Over the years, we've seen full chambers with matching t-shirts that show their support. We've seen people coming in with a stack of signed signatures that isn't a petition, but it shows support, and to me, the delegation process serves that exact need. So councillor Bressi, unless you have other things in mind to sort of convince me, otherwise I couldn't support it. Councillor, I'll go to you, councillor Bressi, and then councillor O'Connor.
Sure.
Okay, councillor O'Connor.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that that's a better process, so I'm glad that you brought that up, Mayor Clayton. You know, we thought that a petition would carry more weight, and I'm using the royal weed because they called me, so what you're saying is, get the community together, come to city council as a delegation, and that will work a lot better for everyone, and we don't have to go the legal way. So I'm not sure if I should support your motion, I don't want to open a can of worms that opens it for somebody else to interpret in a different.
Councillor Plott, or councillor Bressi to close, rather.
Yeah, so I guess the problem is, you're right, people can come to, come as a delegation, but something's missing in our process. Once or twice a year, it seems, we have a delegation that comes to the city to approach something, they get shoveled into this process, which isn't really the process they want, and it often leads to real frustration and sometimes insult to those parties. It also leads to work for administration. I'd highlight that if you Google "city Grand Prairie petition," which is a natural thing for residents to Google when they're trying to figure out how to do this, the first thing that you go to, actually, the top, the top three results are all city results, and they're all taking you to file a formal MGA process. So this might be really as simple as updating our website, say, here's what you need to do if you want to do a petition that's going to legally compulse council to do, and here's just a form or a sheet of paper you can fill, or here's how you do it if you just want to apply political pressure to council. So it might be as simple as just updating our website, I don't think this has to be a big complicated thing, but just every time we have one of these petitions come to us, I feel like I raise, I don't know if this process that got shoveled into is the right one, we should have another process to shovel people into, and that's just something I'd love to make a priority, so I hope the council will pass this motion.
All right, so that was councillor Bressi's close, so I'll call the question. And that has carried six to three. Moving on to item 7.8, public member appointments, there are quite a few of them, I will go around the table and share the fun. I'm going to start with you, councillor Teason, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, I actually just posted a request to speak back.
Perfect.
Honestly, earlier today, I was like, I hope we share the duties, because it's funnier that way. So I guess I'll start with our community advisory committee, and I'd move that council appoint Lyn Sanderson and Kristin Yaseko to the community advisory committee for a three-year term each, ending December 31, 2027.
Perfect, thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole, if you could do the next one, please.
Big names here. I move that council appoint Cameron Donald, Alexander Rodd, David Stewart, Christie Stuckel Witschiger, to the Community Knowledge Campus Advisory Committee for the three-year term each, ending December 31, 2027. Christie, I apologize for doing a terrible name announcement.
All right, that motion is in order. I'll call the question.
See, I even goofed that up.
Okay, I'll call the question, those in favor?
Councillor Berg in favor?
That's unanimously. I'm moving on to the next one, councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council appoint Elke Haggerty to the Complaint Education Committee for a three-year term, ending December 31, 2027.
Perfect, that motion is in order. I'll call the question. Elke Haggerty is the Complaint Adjudication Committee. There we go. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councillor O'Connor, if you could do the next one, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council appoint Wayne Drizdale, Joan Nellis, Scott Ward, Kenton Schultz, Cord Spiro, and Jeremy Walker to the Economic Development Strategy Planning and Advisory Committee for a three-year term each, ending in December 31, 2027.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council appoint Laurie Pollock as the Chamber of Commerce Representative for the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Advisory Committee for a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025.
That, that motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue. I'll call the question. I think that carried unanimously. It's yellow, it's yellow, a minus.
He's got the gold bar.
There we go. We're going to do that again. Uh, hang on. There we go. All right. Next one, councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council appoint Bobby Dawson and Catherine Unger to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for a three-year term each, ending December 31, 2027.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the next one, councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council appoint Melissa Erickson and Shashi Goll to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board for a three-year term each, ending December 31, 2027.
Perfect, that motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue. There we go. That carries unanimously. Moving on to the next one, councillor Blackmore.
I move council appoint Jamie McFadden, Brenda Schirbach, and Alan Ingram to the Joint Appeals Board for a three-year term each, ending December 31, 2027.
Thank you, that motion is in order. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council appoint Alan Ingram as chair for the Assessment Review Board for 2025.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor O'Toole.
I move that council appoint Linda Murphy as chair for the Joint Appeals Board for 2025.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Now moving on to committee business, first item of business today is item 8.1, the Public and Protective Services Committee. The meeting was held December 10, and I will recognize councillor- The meeting was held December 10, and I will recognize Counselor Bosch for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, held December 10, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Couple items of business today.
Yes. The first one is the Community Advisory Committee. This is a group of 10 community members, all very passionate about our community, involved in a variety of different quests of the city, if that's the correct term, from, you know, stormwater engagement to when we're doing the policing, when we're doing, you know, lawn bowling, anything and everything, where there is our attempt as a city to get community involvement and stakeholder engagement. So this just moves them forward to continue to do such a good job in the next year. So I move that council receive this report for information.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bosch.
Okay. Number two, I move council designate City on 99 as a facility for the Integrated Emergency Communications Center. And we had both chiefs here, we called them Chief Squared because that was fun, to explain what an advantage it would be to have our call center, all together with our policing, our fire, mobile outreach, enforcement services, and other community organizations, that when somebody calls in for a service that is needed, that that call is then moved to the right organization to help that call. So it will become more efficient. It will become efficient both in the center where the call service is being held, but efficient in the call to service time, the reactionary time to get to people who are in need. So this is a fantastic improvement, future improvement, near future, for our community, that if there is a call to service, there is attention that is immediate, immediate and the appropriate attention for the call to service. So I hope that our council will vote in favor of this Integrated Emergency Communications Center.
Perfect. That motion is in order. I don't see anyone in the queue, so I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bosch?
Okay. I think mine has the most going on, if I'll be honest with you. Chief Lemieux and his team have done a tremendous amount of work, so I'll just touch on some. The Grand Prairie Police Service, the RCMP, demobilization plan is expected to be shared with the city very, very shortly. Additionally, enforcement is on the hunt for snow route offenders. So if your vehicle shouldn't be there, get it off there so that we can remove the snow. We've had 201 citations for obstructing snow and 53 complaints of unshovelled walkways citywide. So this is important to everyone. It's important for safety in regards to our road conditions now are seeming so icy that if your vehicle is in the wrong spot, it's a safety risk, and I'm okay with tickets. Get them off. Peace Officer Sergeant Balfour recently completed the use of force investigator's course, enhancing the department's capacity to investigate use of force incidents. Additionally, Police Officer Sergeant Hoffman and Peace Officer Gatno completed the radar and LiDAR instructors course, enabling GPEs to provide in-house training for traffic enforcement technology. Our RCMP recently held two town halls, November 26 and 27, and both those evenings had significant numbers of people attending, plus there was an online service survey, which had 700 respondents. So really good to hear that. Recreation and events, ASA football provincials were held November 22 and 23 at Hanson Lincoln Field. 439 athletes, 104 coaches and staff, and 24 officials. It was freezing cold, but 835 people braved that cold and attended this event. The annual East Link mystery gift card sale didn't disappoint as every other year. The facility opened at 5:30 in the morning. Counselor Blackmore was there to attest to that, and people waiting in the lineup for the 7:00 AM start. It moved very quickly, this line, and 700 available mystery gift cards were sold in 58 minutes. So that's exciting. It's like a Taylor Swift concert of a source. More exciting, okay. Festival funding applications are due January 1. So reminder for everyone, get those applications in for your upcoming festivals. And Bonnet's Energy hosted an annual tree lighting in partnership with the Downtown Association, followed by the Battle of the Badges, and our police service won that battle in this year and last year. So happy to hear that. It's a great event. Upcoming events, Storm Games. Come and support the Storm. They are doing remarkable this year. Our attendance is doing well. We just need to keep people coming and supporting our team. Great, great year for the Storm this year. New Year's Eve, or New Year's evening out, December 31, and at Moscossepi, and the Grand North Winter Festival, January 10 through 12. Housing and Community Development, there was grants received in support of Youth Career Discovery Expo, 5,000 from Northwestern Alberta Foundation, and 28,600 from the Government of Alberta Workforce Partnership Grant. So that, last year, we had this. It was a great expo for our young, up-and-coming workers. So this year will be even stronger. We also had reports about towing requirements, efficiencies, legal compliance, and reducing the strain on emergency resources. We had a noise level presentation done as well, and Enforcement Services prioritized the education of targeting vehicles that are in excess of noise, and will continue into 2025. Happy to hear that. We also had a report for e-scooters potentially in our city. So we're going to move forward with more information coming with that type of service for our community, and then, of course, the Integrated Emergency Communications Center. So lots going on at that meeting.
Great. Thanks for your report, Counselor Bosch. Moving on to item 8.2, the Operational Services Committee meeting, held December 10, and I'll turn this one over to Counselor Plott for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee, held December 10, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
I see in favor.
That carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Plott?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. We had a lot of talk about snow removal. So as I'm reading through this report, it says priority tube blading will be completed at the end of the week. I believe all the two-week residential rotation was mostly finished. I believe it is finished now, and we're going back into the start of the year, so we'll start doing our second round of residential snow clearing. It's been an exceptional amount of snow, and I want to thank our staff for keeping up with the challenge we were having. We'll continue on with our priority areas. Wind roll pickup is approximately 50% done as of time of the report, and expected to be complete early this week, with pile and storage hauling to begin after that. We've posted RFPs for road condition assessment and paving management systems. Our corporate facility management, the Golden Age Center has engaged a firm to create a concept drawing and a budget. Administration will bring a report back next month. Center 2000 painting, siding repairs, and deck refurbishments are complete. Under Transit Services, year-to-date ridership continues to be up, with the conventional transit up 49%, Grand Prairie Accessible Transit up 5%, and On Demand up 36%. So great to see those numbers continue to climb. And Environment and Parks Administration continues plowing pathways, clearing the stops, and ice making is continuing on five high board outdoor rigs. That's my report.
Thanks, Counselor Plott. Moving on to item 8.3, the Investment Strategy Committee meeting, held December 10, rather, and I'll turn that one over to Counselor Bressi for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Investment Strategy Committee from December.
10.
10, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Counselor O'Connor, are you sensing on the minutes?
I had a question for Chief Lemieux on the last report.
Okay.
And at a high level, as there were, do we have access to that, some of the high-level results of that 700 surveys, or is that not accessible to us?
Chief Lemieux?
Thank you, through the chair. So yes, there will be what we heard reported coming back to council.
Thank you.
All right. So back to the business that we're voting on, the minutes. I'll call the question. Oh, Mikey. That carries unanimously. Couple items of business today, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw, see 1481 being the council parental leave bylaw.
That motion is in order, in order for us to carry on. There's no discussion or debate in first reading. I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw, see 1481. And just to speak to this, we are Canada's, I think it's, we're the second youngest city, we're the second, we're the oldest.
We're the youngest city on cities over 25,000 people.
Yep. And so we are a young city, and that's a real strength here. And I really think that means that we need to allow younger people and people of young children to be able to run for office. For me, this is a challenging job, but I think it is doable when you have young kids. However, if we don't have policy set aside, then there actually is a provincial requirement that you show up at least every eight weeks to a council meeting. You can't actually take a couple months off to be with a new child under existing policies and existing provincial legislation, unless we have a bylaw giving councillors permission to take parental leave. So I think if we want to be able to give candidates of all ages and all family situations an opportunity to run for office, we also need to make sure that they can set aside time to welcome a new child into their families, and if they need it, undergo whatever physical recovery they might have to undergo from having a child. And so I personally think it's really important we have a parental leave policy in place for councillors, just like most professions do, and so I hope council will support this.
All right. So that motion is in order for second reading. Opportunity for questions for administration, recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I have a few questions. What difference would it make from the way it's current now to what you propose? We already have up to eight weeks they can take off. We have Zoom meetings that they can attend virtually. And just tell me the highlights, why I should be voting in favor.
I'll turn that over to Mr. Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So there are a number of provisions in there that would allow for increased flexibility for the councillor, should they choose to accept their parental leave. One of the main considerations is that it allows for, you know, if there is an extended break, they wouldn't have to fall under the rules where if you miss consecutive council meetings, you could be removed from council. So that would exempt them from that provision. And so then it gives them that flexibility. Also, in terms of their responsibilities on boards and committee, it gives the, you know, the council the ability to appoint alternates in their stead, should they choose to adopt that. So then they have that full certainty that they don't, wouldn't be required during that time to attend the committees, and they wouldn't be derelict in their duties by not attending those committees. So a couple, I think, of the highlights.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. My question is around, what if this leave was during mandatory meetings or such as budget? Like, that is really our sole purpose here, is to align our budgets. And as a female who has had children, I don't believe that we just check out just because we have a child. We have the ability of online meetings. I'm fully supportive of the online meetings that we have, or involving somebody through Zoom. I think that is something that is adapted to our work-life balance that wasn't around before. But I really question the mandatory piece of this, of what we do here as councillors. Nothing against anybody wanting to have kids and doing their work, but I would think that everybody would, who has signed on to become a councillor, doesn't necessarily want to check out in that four-month period. So how do we handle something like mandatory meetings?
Do you have a comment on that, Mr. Tarrant?
Through the chair, I would just make the first point that this is voluntary, so that it's not requirement. So a councillor would have to choose whether they want to accept this parental benefit. Right now, if they did choose it, there is no requirement for them to attend any mandatory meetings. If council wishes to put in that requirement, there could be amendment made, and we could provide some language for that.
So can I ask you, can they, if they choose to take this parental leave, but want to be a part of some of these meetings, such as the budget deliberations, can they come back into that piece, or do they have to, like some certain unions, fully be out regardless?
Mr. Tarrant?
Maybe I'm going to pass this to Director Hanson, who has a little bit more familiarity with the intricacies of the legislation.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. Through the chair, there would be an agreement that would be made between the council member going on leave and the city. Their participation in budget meetings virtually could be an option. The bylaw doesn't indicate that they're restricted from continuing to be involved, but it does give them the waiver to not be involved. And so that would be an agreement that council could make with the council member at the time.
Fair enough.
Counselor O'Toole. You're good. Okay. Okay. No further questions for administration, so I'm going to, do you wish to close, Counsel, on second reading?
Yeah, thank you. I would love to close. And just speak to a couple of concerns I've heard. I'd just highlight that on council, we are a team of nine people. Historically, Grand Prairie elects nine very strong people to this position. When you're a parent, you're maybe a team of two, you're maybe a team of one. And I'd argue that your parental role is actually far more important than that your council role, even as important as this role is. So for me, I think it is important to not tell candidates, hey, you need to plan your family around when in the year budget's going to happen, but also be able to tell them, but you can do this role and have young children and still take care of your family and take care of your team when you're there. If a councillor is going through circumstances where they have to miss budget, I'm calm. That's not ideal. For sure, that's not ideal. But I'm confident that the team around the council table can make up for that. Something else I'd highlight is, right now, if a councillor wants to disappear for four months, they actually really can. They just have to call in once for one meeting every eight weeks, and then dip out again. And under this current status quo, if a councillor chose to do that, they would continue to collect full salary, and there would be absolutely no provision for the rest of council to fill in their committee positions. So for somebody who wants to be responsible and take a leave in the way that's fair to taxpayers and fair to the residents that elected them, this gives them that opportunity to say, hey, I'm going to focus on my family, but I'm going to make sure that my work is covered by my council colleagues, and I'm also not going to take full salary while I'm away from the council table. So for somebody who doesn't, isn't really dedicated to this job, this doesn't really change anything for them. But for somebody who is dedicated to this job, it allows them to take time for their family in a more responsible way than they're able to right now. So I hope the council will support this.
All right. That was Counselor Bressi's close on second reading. So I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries seven to two. Moving on to third reading. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading at I would move the council have third reading at this meeting. And just speak to it, we are, before our next council meeting nominations will be open, so it's important we get this done today, in my opinion. Else going to get this done, so I hope all my colleagues will support having third readings today.
All right, still an opportunity for discussion or debate on third reading. In order for us to have third reading, this must pass unanimously. If anybody has any discussion or debate, feel free. If not, I'm going to call the question. Seeing none, call the question. And so, that is a motion, that is defeated as it was not unanimous? Counselor Thiessen?
No, I, I, sorry, I.
Okay, let's revote. Call the question on having third reading. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do want to thank my colleagues for letting third reading happen today, and I would move the council give third reading, see bylaw C fourteen eighty-one being the council parental leave bylaw.
All right, so this is third reading, opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries eight to one. Moving on, policy one hundred, council remuneration and expense reimbursement. You are still up, Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council approve policy one hundred, being the council remuneration expense reimbursement policy as presented to be effective October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. And just, just to speak to this, it's awkward, the council's task was setting its own salary and remuneration, so the longstanding practice we have here is that we only make minor tweaks to it for operational efficiencies during our term, but for wholesale, actual change, we wait until the end of a term and we set remuneration for the incoming council. And so, this policy is about what will people who are elected next October receive, and it's important we get this done today, because I, there's a chance that Returning Officer Tarrant's desk is flooded with applications, the nominations started January first, and so I hope the council will approve this policy today.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order, recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Just want to, just a small correction, that we have an external committee that does the investigation on, it's not us setting this policy, just a choice of words, so I just think it's important that it's not us setting what the policy is, but an external committee. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, would you wish to close, Counselor Bressi?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, thank you. Really briefly, we had a number of updates on corporate sponsorships of a number of city assets and events, so just want to give a big thank you to our corporate partners who support the enhancing our residents' quality of life, but want to highlight a number of those were for the Grand North Winter Fest, which is coming up. So, for residents that aren't planning to attend, it's a great weekend where we get to have lots of winter fun at our downtown core, so I'm looking forward to that. I hope I'll see you all there, and thank you to our staff and our corporate partners who are making that possible.
Thanks for that, those highlights. Moving on to item eight point four, the Financial Administration Administrative Services Committee meeting, also held December tenth, and I'll turn this one over to Counselor Bosch, or Burke, rather, for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting, held December tenth, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. What are you missing? Oh, there we go. That carries unanimously. Counselor Burke, one item of business today.
Yeah, I'd like to move council approve Fletcher Mudrick LLP as the Grand Prairie Public Library's external auditor for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Fletcher Mudrick has been their auditor for a number of years, and they wish to continue on with him.
All right, so that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, discussion or debate? I'll call the question. Counselor O'Toole, how do you vote? That carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Under financial management, administration is working with preparing the year-end for the city, as well as wrapping up November month-end variances, taxation and assessment. Administration is working with communications to get the message out regarding the upcoming January first penalty on outstanding taxes. Penalty is six percent on everything outstanding. Procurement and supply chain management, a number of things are going on there. Find out more on our city website. And geographical and information technology services, administration continues to work on the transition of city staff to the Grand Prairie Police Service, and that are some of the highlights.
Thanks for that, Counselor Burke. Moving on to item eight point five, the council committee, the whole meeting held December eleventh, recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the council meeting of the whole meeting held December eleventh as presented.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item, item number nine, correspondence. And in today's package, we have a letter from the CEO of Aquaterra, as well as the board chair of Aquaterra, with a request for director reappointments. I think it's pretty self-explanatory in your package, recognizing Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council authorize the mayor to vote in favor of endorsing the recommendations of the Aquaterra Board for the following up reappointments, Lina Laflamme, Rob Patron, and Mark Wilson, for an additional three-year term each to the board.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order, and for those who are watching at home, each of the chief elected officers go to vote on this, and so this motion will endorse, if passed, will endorse me to go and vote in favor of these representatives. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Counselor Bressi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And that carries unanimously. Now, moving on to delegation business. Today, we had two delegations, and looking, I'll move to item ten point one first, the Masqua Medical Center. There was two requests here today, first one being a removal of fees for development and building permits, and the second one being in regards to the, their loan. I'll recognize Counselor Plot first.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to make a motion that administration work with proponents to waive fees for the Masqua Medical Center, and I guess to speak to this, it would only be the areas that would be deemed not-for-profits or agency areas, not any business-associated areas.
I think that's pretty clear. Did you require anything else, Mr. Burke?
I would just add, we would work with them on their application, and this would come back to the Operational Services Committee for approval.
Okay, do I need to change out of my motion?
Nope, that's the process.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, Counselor Blackmore, thank you for the next item. Okay, seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. I just had a question for administration, out of curiosity. Did we have an amount that that equates to assuming our sort of rough numbers that we were assuming for these, or that we're aware of for the size of the facility? Chief Glavin?
And are you suggesting a rough number based on the for-profit, not-for-profit side?
No, the total building.
Total building, yeah, I think we're, that would qualify, I think, is close to the entirety of what they're being quoted, which I think was two seventy-five to three hundred somewhere in there. But we'll have that completely ironed out through that application process.
Excellent. I thought, I think that sounds familiar, so I just wanted to clarify. Thanks for that, to recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Question for CAO Burke. I'm curious, we did have a request for us to give the Masqua Medical Board permission to use some of the backstop loan that we're giving them to order supplies. How would that process work? What would we need to do? Would we need to change the agreement they just signed, or what would be the process?
Mr. Burke?
At, at this stage today, yes, it would require an amendment to the agreement. They have indicated to us that they are working with two, two loan providers, which would actually then, if they're successful in the short term, would actually not then require a, a change in our agreement, because that would trigger the clause for us to release that agreement. We would have, we can have a fairly quick turnaround, talking to our CFO to, to release at least five hundred thousand dollars of those funds, if that was what was required. My advice would be that, as we're looking at waiving some of the fees, that maybe some of our other municipal partners could, could look at that being their contribution if they need it in the next few days, or we wait for them to, to trigger the clause through exercising their loan agreements.
Okay, thank you. I'm not prepared to make any changes at this time.
Counselor Bressi?
Great, yeah, I'm not prepared to make any changes at this time either, but I just kind of asked that we keep tabs on it, and if we revisit this on our January thirteenth meeting, if necessary, would be my suggestion.
Okay. Seeing no one else in the queue, we're going to move on to the next item of business, ten point two. Mr. Schaefer came to talk about an circumstance within his tax billing and had a couple of requests in his delegation form, rather. Recognize Counselor Blackmore.
I, I do understand that staff don't have any authority when it comes to waiving taxes, but I would like to ask Chief White Way what the process has been to date in working with Mr. Schaefer, and what options have been provided for him and his taxes.
Ms. White Way?
Thank you, through the mayor. So, the property was purchased by the delegate in twenty twenty. At that time, the address from land titles was what the tax and assessment team utilized. Twenty twenty-one, taxes were paid in full, and so subsequent till, from twenty twenty-one until now, no, no further payment has been received. Our first return to sender was December of twenty twenty-three. From that time, our tax and assessment team did attempt in multiple ways to update and correct an address, but oftentimes with properties that don't hold mortgage, it's more difficult for us to track down addresses. So, the tax team did make the decision to start hand-delivering to the location, which is a commercial property in the city, and that is what triggered the delegation here today. So, to my knowledge, Mr., or sorry, Director Smith has already discussed with the delegate and is happy to further discuss a payment plan or anything else that could help in the situation.
Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Ms. White Way, it sounds like you're got it in hand and your, one of your staff is going to work with them. If, if there is proven that the address was incorrect, does he have any weight to stand on?
Ms. White Way?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, under section three oh four of the Municipal Government Act, it is the assessed person who is responsible to notify the municipality in writing of an address change to which assessment notices must be mailed. That message is printed on all of our assessments, and it is not our responsibility to update mailing addresses unless we're told to do so in writing, which did not occur.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just a quick question to administration. If they received the, the invoice in twenty twenty, can you explain how the delegation says that they didn't receive it after that? I, I just don't understand if they paid the bill in twenty twenty. Or is it gone?
I don't have the answer to that question. I mean, it never got returned to sender. There's no way for us to track down mail. We never got it back as incorrect, so we would know no difference. There's nothing other than a taxpayer indicating to us they need an address change, or if we got it back as an incorrect, which we did in twenty twenty-three, and that's what turned into eventually just hand-delivering to the location.
Do we know in twenty twenty what the address was? Was it this, the right one or the wrong one?
Through the mayor? It was the wrong one, the, the one that we're, we sent up till right now. That was the address used in twenty twenty. It is still currently what Land Titles has as a mailing address today, too.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Burke?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Last year, we had somebody appeal based on the death and, and that their spouse had typically paid the taxes and, and went to make a motion to relieve it, but then was stopped just due to the MGA. A question for CAO Burke. Can you speak to the MGA? And it's, it's a big document, it's about two inches thick, around, I guess, where our hands may be tied due to that legislation from the province?
Mr. Burke?
At a high level, it requires council to consider these, and any, any waivers to be equitable, so not to look at one case, but to look at either classes or general circumstances for, for, for a broad section.
So, in other words, if we did this for this one, we would have to do it for everyone?
Counsel would have to consider that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Blackmore?
So, so to follow up on that, my understanding is, CAO Burke, that if, if we were to contemplate this change, we would need to make a policy change that would deal with incorrect addresses in our tax system, or something like that. Like, we, we don't just say we're going to deal with Person A's issue, it has to be more broadband.
Mr. Burke?
In general, yes. Council will recall that during some of the COVID shutdowns, that there was a policy put forward by council to look at some, some tax penalties as, as a general class for all involved in that. So, there has been circumstances where council has considered that, so yes, we'd have to look at a broad, broader policy.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. It's, I, I will, I will make a motion, because I think Ms. Schaefer deserves an answer from council, but my motion would be that council decline, decline the request that was made today, and it's sure not a motion I want to make. If this was my own business, where I could do whatever I want, and I could do whatever I want, not only on this, but also in future decisions when new people approach me, then yeah, I'd really want to work with Mr. Schaefer to make, to make something, something work. But this isn't private business, this is, we're an order of government that's subject to laws that another order of government makes, and that other order of government has really tied our hands with this in terms of, if we, if we allow this request, then we might be forced to allow other requests that, that have different circumstances in the future, and that's something that just, in the context that we have to operate under according to the legislation that creates us, I just don't think that this is feasible for us to do. So, I hate to make this motion, I hate to support this motion, but I think it's the only real option that council has, given the context we have to work in, so I hope that council will vote in favor of this motion.
All right, so your motion is in order. I'll recognize Counselor Blackmore.
I, I will support the motion for the reasons that Counselor Bressi has raised, but I would encourage the delegate, Mr. Schaefer, to continue to work with our taxation department. I am confident that they will do anything within their legal power to help you work through this process, and it's probably not going to be quick, and it's probably not going to be easy, but they will certainly do their best to ensure that everyone involved has a satisfactory solution in the end.
All right, Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. As, as this item's come up a couple times, and we are sort of hand-tied with the MGA, I'm just wondering if administration is, is there any talk at provincial level about this specifically? It seems kind of sad to me, I guess, as a council, if we, if we open it up to this, we're opening it up to every-
if we open it up to this, we're opening it up to everybody because there does feel like there's some one-off opportunities here that we've had over the time. And I'm just wondering if there's any advocacy work being done on the MGA around this to allow counsel to have the ability to make a change without having to blanket everything? Is there anything being done on that? Or is ABUNIS doing anything on that? Or is this just one of those, it's open up the whole community to talk about the MGA?
Counsel Teason, sorry. There's no discussion around this, to my knowledge, Counsel Bressi's knowledge or Mr. Burke's knowledge.
Okay, fair enough, thanks.
Counsel Teason, you have something else? Okay, okay, okay. So, that motion is in order. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Today, there are no notices of motion, and we aren't having a recess. We will now move on to council member reports. I'm going to start with Counsel Blackmore.
I am, of course, totally prepared to answer this question. So, I did, going back to last, two weeks ago Tuesday, I did attend the drop-in session at International Day of Persons with Disabilities. And I had a really interesting discussion there with people who train service dogs and also with the people who teach sign language. I thought that that information was very valuable. I did attend, I'll skip that one. I'm not going to go through all of these. I did attend the coffee session at Alberta Health Services that was sponsored by the city and in Vest Grand Prairie. That was a very well-attended event. And that made my heart happy because we've done this a couple of times in the past without a lot of staff at the hospital coming for coffee or for a chat with us. And it was just really heartening to see such a good turnout. I really appreciated the opportunity to talk to people who work at the hospital and find out how they feel about things on their own turf. The following day, I attended a breakfast meeting with Scotiabank, the mayor and Counsel O'Connor and Counsel Burke. We had a discussion with, this is not, this is the upper management or the regional management of Scotiabank, just wanting to tell us what changes they see coming in their banking world. And was appreciated to do that. I also attended a, no, I'll do that, that was canceled. I attended an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, and this was the first time that I attended this meeting as I was newly appointed to this committee. It's one that I'm really excited to be on, and I look forward to seeing the work that the committee does. It was, there wasn't a lot of pre-Christmas to be discussed, but I do really appreciate that. And on Friday evening, I attended the Downtown Association Christmas Social of the Year. And thank you very much to the Downtown Association and to Counsel Burke, who hosted that at Grantberg Gallery. So appreciate being in such a beautiful setting. And for me, that actually sets the tone for Christmas for me. So, yeah, thank you, and that concludes my report.
It's like Counsel Blackmore, Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. A few things I got to attend that other members of counsel weren't at was I got to attend a Policy Governance Committee for the Police Commission.
Exciting.
It was exciting. Policy governance is fun. I got to attend an executive committee meeting for Alberta municipalities. Some that I did see a number of your faces were at was I got to attend the management, the morning of the management retreat, the side group organized for their staff with Josh Linker, but invited leaders from across the community to come and really appreciated the side group sharing that quality speaker and those quality conversations with the rest of the community. So, that was great. So, that's not really my counsel role, it's more a volunteer role. But I got invited to sit on the Research Ethics Board at NWP. And so, if there's any research that involves human subjects, this is the board that looks at the research methodology to make sure that it's being done ethically. And we got to go through our first proposal. So, that was interested to see how some of the sausage is made at our local institution that doesn't just do good education, but also does great research. And so, that was a fun opportunity for me.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bressi, Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just going to mention a couple. The Chamber of Commerce AGM, that is always a great event. And it's awards and the chair salute. So, it was sold out this year, so happy for them to have a sellout. They had, let me see here, new elected board members, John Anderson as the chair, and a special thank you to Gord Spiero, who is the now post-chair. So, and then the, doesn't, they don't even have the list here. There we go. Lori Pollak is the new board chair for, upcoming board chair. So, that's always great. Yeah, sorry, I don't have it all in front of me. The chamber, or the council strategic planning check-in, we all went to that to see how we've done in this three or four years and our last year in and what transpires in this last year prior to the election in October. So, that check-in was really good. Once you put on paper all the things you've accomplished, it's shocking, it's surprising to see that list. It was in tiny little writing that most of us had to like zoom in. But because of the amount of things that we did do as a council and a community. And then, of course, the many mixers and get-togethers that is this time of year. So, that's my report.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bosch, Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Attended the International Persons with Disabilities, the EHS event that some other colleagues have talked about, as well as the AGM. Want to give a shout-out to Gord Spiero for his work in the last year as the chair. And welcome John Anderson as the new chair. This council strategic planning session was great. Once again, to do a check-in with our group. And I attended my first, I guess, LIP meeting, Local Immigration Partnership, where we talked about the terms of references being able of partners to review. And then also talking about the services for application with the federal government. They received confirmation that the call for proposal for the direct services had been denied, and the call for proposal for indirect services has been approved, but with a reduced budget compared to what was requested. So, unfortunate for them, and that's my report.
Thanks for that, Counsel Plot, Counsel Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, it was a pretty busy week, full of lots of Christmas engagement parties and sing-alongs with Counsel O'Connor. But I'll start with my appointed committee. So, on December 5th, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance met at Center 2000 here in Grand Prairie. We had a discussion and a review over our finances, as well as our different committees, starting with our State of the Watershed Report, which is our biggest report that we do every 15 years in the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, which got the direction, at least got approval from the full board, so not just the committee that I sit on. So, that was really good. We also received a presentation from Alberta Environment Parks on wetlands by a lady named Marcia, which I thought was kind of synchronistic. Wetlands, Marsh, you know, she said she also worked with a guy named Pete, too. So, that was kind of cool. Anyways, but the reason I mention this is the province is also engaging in a big water availability engagement, and they're doing a survey online for any people who are on this council table or any person with some level of water literacy on what your water availability looks like. So, it's going across province, it's available on alberta.ca, and it only goes till January 10th. So, they're going to collate all the information that they get and I imagine working into a plan under their new water and the Circular Economy Division. So, that could be interesting. But I would encourage every member to at least check it out, alberta.ca backslash water-availability-engagement. That's all you need to know, and then fill out the questionnaire. On December 6th, I met with Grand Spirit Foundation here at the Paradise Hotel in Grand Prairie. Mostly it was our organizational meeting. So, to that extent, I'd like to congratulate Judy Cocatilla Beckeras for being reappointed as board chair and to Alvin Huber, who also was reappointed as board chair by a slim margin over Tom Burton in a rare election around our board table. But both men are eager and willing, and both were eager and willing to not do the work if they had to. So, I commend both for standing up and being very engaged with Grand Spirit Foundation. At that board meeting, we also planned our strategic planning getaway in January, as well as, I bet you guys didn't know this, but Grand Spirit Foundation, which serves seniors, families, and housing, is turning into a senior themselves with this upcoming year being our 65th anniversary for Grand Spirit Foundation. So, we have a whole slate of ideas for celebrations that we're working on, and planning for that is underway. Just to mention, I did take part in the International Day of Persons with Disabilities, as well as the International Volunteer Celebration. I'd like to take a moment quickly just to thank all of our nominated people and the winners and all of our volunteers, really, who truly make all of our events and everything that's happening. Awesome in Grand Prairie, extra awesome because we couldn't do it without those people giving their heart, soul, and unpaid hours to the glorious cause. And a big, big thank you to the Grand Prairie Police Department's very own Erica Fisher for winning Volunteer of the Year. Way to go, Erica. Also, I was at the Chamber AGM, the Neighborhood Association Year-end Mixer. I did a little emcey for the City Hall Christmas Potluck. Did some time at the Downtown Association Christmas Mixer and had some good intimate conversations there with some great food and good friends. And finally, I also took part in a community conversation around people who have been injured from the mRNA vaccine and what you can do to help yourself clear your system from any damage that may have occurred. It was a good conversation had by members of the community, put on by members of the community, and lots of solutions and stories shared at that event. Thanks, everyone, that was my couple weeks.
Thanks, Counsel Teason, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Start off with the Combat sports commission. I've had one, one group reach out to see if we can, or if they can host an event in Grand Prairie. And they're just asking questions at this point, but they are tentatively planning at the beginning of March or sometime in March. And with that, also, the Combat Sports Commission was invited to Calgary to be part of an inquest into a death in the beginning of the month. Franck Douches, Douches. He passed away after an event in the Enoch Reserve. And that was in 2024, just this couple, three weeks ago. And the last death that happened in Canada, or in Alberta, was Timothy Hague. And that was in 2017, it was in November. So, what part are we going to be playing? We're just going to discuss about having the provincial government be the commission. And we're just going to give some insight and our perspectives. And I've been reaching out to other people to see what theirs are. And the person that's going to be in there, that's going to be doing most of the talking is Victor Q. He's the CEO of the Edmonton Elks, past Edmonton Elks, and founder of One Championship, a global martial arts media organization. But it'll be heavily involved with the province. There are going to be ministers there. And I'm also going down with Stephanie Casualy, which is part of our sports development count in the city here. So, flying out tomorrow and coming back tomorrow. I attended the coffee and cake at the hospital with the doctors and other healthcare workers. Helix Engineering had an open house. International Volunteer Day. I also did the IDPD. We tried something very different than we have in the past. There was no official meal. There was not a lot of discussion, but we brought a lot of the nonprofits that come in to support people that have disabilities and talk about what they can do and how they operate and offer assistance to anybody that has a disability and how things can work out for them by working with them. Attended the Storm Teddy Bear Toss, overwhelmingly success. And the Storm won that game. It was a good game, a little rough on the other guys, but it was a good game. Did the strat plan check in? I also attended the Special Olympics Grand Prairie in July of next year. And I'm reaching out to you right now, we're going to do a polar dunk. And I'm looking for a few other people to be part of that. Maybe we can get, you know, some youth involved so they don't have a heart attack. Also, we, I attended the Polar, or Grand Prairie Police Commission Committee and Executive Holiday Dinner. And I also went out and served hot chocolate at the Peace Country Draft Horse Wagon Rides at Evergreen Park. It was a very cold day and still very well-attended. And with that, I also attended the Grantberg Gallery on behalf of the Downtown Association. And what a great evening that was. Thank you very much for my report.
All right, thanks for that, Counsel O'Toole, Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I attended my first Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting as the chair, so thank you for that appointment. I'm looking forward to that. Some very sharp business minds from around the city are on this, and I have a hunch we're going to be quite active moving forward with the recent announcement of Wonder Valley just south of Grand Prairie, the AI Data Center. One of those busy days that starts out at 6:45 and you get home at 9:00, two breakfasts. So, the first one was the Volunteer Services Breakfast. Again, it's been mentioned, but Erica Fisher was Grand Prairie's Volunteer of the Year. And as her former boss, I was very proud of her. So, nice connection there. And congratulations to all the volunteers in the city, whether you're recognized or not. Without volunteers, the city wouldn't be the same. The second breakfast, again, was mentioned, with Scotiabank. They had their Western Canadian management team in town and wanted to meet with us, so had a nice visit there. And then that evening, the Chamber of Commerce AGM. And again, good team there, elected to the board and to continue some good work. And I will throw out one more item. ATB Trivia Night with ATB CEO Curtis Tang in attendance, although I didn't get any FaceTime with the CEO. I did sit next to Peter Kim with the Salvation Army. And I'll use the opportunity that if you have the means this Christmas, please donate to the Salvation Army Food Bank. And that's my report.
Thanks for that, Counsel Berg, Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, I'll try and keep it short. Loved going to see Josh Linkner that the side group sent out, and it totally opened my eyes to the judo flip. Never heard that term used before, but it's a great strategy of looking at how you can accomplish things by flipping the paradigm around. Attended with Grantberg, the Youth Advisory Council meeting last Monday. We did the tree lighting and the county city council and AHS, their third anniversary. And it was very well-attended. Attended the Neighborhood Association Christmas Mixer. Unfortunately, there were only two associations that came to the meeting. And Counselor Teason was there with me, and then Counselor Bressi showed up. And you, you know, I just encourage the neighborhood associations, there's all kinds of supports for you and different kind of projects and access to grants to help improve your neighborhood. And went to the Chamber salute and the AGM, and that's my report. Everybody's mentioned everything else, thank you.
Thanks for that, Counsel O'Connor. I will take this time to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. It's our last council meeting before the end of the year. I will provide my update at our next meeting as we have some other business to take care of this evening. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's put forward an incredible year in the city of Grand Prairie. The work that they do on a daily basis makes our job much easier, so it's truly appreciated. And I hope you have a safe, happy, healthy holiday season, and we'll see you in 2025. Thanks so much, everyone.